Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to this evening's Select Board meeting for Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. This evening, we have several items on our agenda, and to begin with, we would ask Chief Cassidy to join us for the first item, Coronavirus Community Update. Chief Cassidy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief. I know you have a very robust agenda this evening. First of all, we have much to celebrate here in Holliston. It has been one month since we had our last diagnosis of a case of coronavirus in Holliston. June 8th was our last case that was reported. Our last case cleared on the 24th of June, so we've been a month without any new cases, and we've been several weeks without any -- we've been down to zero for several weeks. So our mitigation efforts have been working. We realize that it's been inconvenient for many people, and there's been a lot of disruption to families and systems and processes, but it has been worth it because compared to some of our neighboring communities, we really have seen the numbers go in the correct direction and stay in the correct direction. Now, I don't want us to become complacent. We still need to make sure that we continue to do the physical distancing, the wearing of the CDC-approved face coverings, washing of hands, all of those steps. But all of that really launches us very well for tomorrow's reopening of many municipal offices to the public. We are prepared for 50% occupancy for several municipal offices. We've been shuttling PPE and supplies to different departments to make sure that they are ready. I'd like to express my thanks to both the Facilities Manager and the IT Director for the work that they've done to not only change the physical space, but to make sure that any shared technology equipment has the proper barriers and skins on it to make sure that we can minimize exposure, and just the flexibility of the department heads and their employees as they return to a very different work environment than when they left, many of them back in March. The Senior Center will be opening by appointment only on Monday, the 13th of July. The Library will be opening to the public on Tuesday, the 14th of July, but they will still be offering curbside pickup and home delivery for the folks that don't feel comfortable coming in to browse the stacks. PD and FD will continue to remain closed to the public for the foreseeable future, and you had asked me to report out on the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program through the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. That deadline is this Friday. That would be up to $50,000 for the community, and it is to be used for preventing, preparing for, and/or responding to the coronavirus. So there are allowable expenses, which are very similar to what's in the CARES Act, what's in the FEMA reimbursement, things such as PPE, equipment and technology, coronavirus testing, training, hiring of outside vendors for deep cleaning and sanitizing of departments. So I certainly have no problem preparing an application, putting it in, because if we can use this funding and make more CARES Act available for other purposes, we'll just try and maximize all of the funding sources available to us.
On that grant, real quick, Mike, do the funds have an end date similar to the CARES Act, or is that on a fiscal year basis?
They are...
I'm going to guess June 30th.
So anticipated grant award was through August 31st of 2021.
Okay, great.
So yeah, period of performance is September 1st to August 31st.
Might make sense to move some of the CARES Act things that were more of a long-term impact.
Or some of the functions like cleaning and sanitizing, which right now would have to sunshine under either FEMA or CARES to potentially push off, push some of those expenses off.
Right. Any questions for the chief?
Just two things. Is there, do we have like a list of the expenditures and the possible expenditures, like some proposed things, like I know the schools had some things?
We do.
For the CARES Act?
Yes.
To this point?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've got the working spreadsheet that I had before we made our application to the Commonwealth, and we have what is entered into Munis right now, but last I checked, that had not all been reclassified to CARES Act or FEMA account numbers. Those were just sort of in a holding pattern, and I know the accountant has been focused on closing out FY '20 and preparing for town meeting, so I don't think that I could run a report that shows by category. Right now, it's pretty much lump sum payments.
Okay. I mean, as long as we're, you know, maybe after town meeting, we can...
Yeah, I anticipate that we're going to be able to get a better reporting structure as soon as we get past a little...
Yeah, it'd be good also just to make sure that we're not like, you know, seeing redundant applications for things and such, so that way we're making sure that, you know, if we've done it, it's all set, and we can kind of move on from some of that besides like PPEs. And my other question is, are we, so the town hall is opening tomorrow? Is that correct?
The majority of the municipal offices are opening to the public at 50% capacity tomorrow. That's correct.
Okay. And are, you know, how's that, are people comfortable with that? Is that moving along smoothly for people, for the departments?
It's department by department. I've had some that were more ready to resume normal operations than others. We've tried to work with them on an individual basis and provide them with the equipment and the training to make sure that they are comfortable and feel that this is a safe environment for them to work in.
Okay.
The department heads still have the flexibility to offer a hybrid or a modified schedule for any employee that may have a specific situation that would have them in a high-risk category where it might not be appropriate for them to be exposed to the public for eight hours a day. They have that flexibility as department heads, and they can deal with that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Ritter.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. What is the name of the grant program you just referred to?
That is the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program for local municipal police and fire departments.
Ah, okay.
So it's only, the expenses are only eligible for a municipal police and fire, and the total ask cannot exceed $50,000, and it's up to the municipality to determine how that's split, or if it all goes to one or the other.
All right. And that was, which office was putting that out?
Executive Office of Public Safety and Security.
Public Safety and Security, okay. And then coming, following up on Ben's comments and questions, if an employee has a concern about their risk as a high-risk individual, own personal health, they have a couple avenues?
Yes.
They can seek an accommodation from their physician, a medical record, letter, excuse me, from their physician to request an accommodation?
Correct.
Okay. And that would then allow them to seek some sort of hybrid work situation with their department head?
Right, to make sure that the department heads are protected so that it doesn't appear that they're giving disparate treatment to one employee over another. It would be appropriate for them to have some documentation from a medical professional. Doesn't have to specify what their condition is for privacy reasons, but it would have to be a physician letterhead that specified there was a legitimate health concern that would warrant making an accommodation.
And then in terms of communication over concerns about sort of logistics, in any one department, it goes employee to department head, department head to town administrator?
Correct.
In terms of communicating those concerns?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then the town administrator would work with the other people involved in the response and the logistics. I mean, if it's a facilities issue, it might be directed to the Facilities Manager. If it's an IT issue and they don't feel comfortable sharing a computer or a keyboard, that might be an IT director issue. If it's more of an overarching issue, you know, they don't think that we have enough PPE or enough hand sanitizer, that sort of thing, that might come to me. If it's a question of the frequency of extra cleaning and sanitizing, that's a facilities issue, because the Facilities Manager is bringing in extra cleaning twice a day at the municipal buildings that are being opened to the public.
And you've been very clear that it's the discretion of the department head in terms of open to the public, whether it's by appointment, whether it's certain hours, and so on. That's the department head's decision. It's not a blanket across town hall or town buildings.
Correct. And I did ask that they would communicate any deviations from open to the public at 50% capacity on July 9th to me, which is why I announced the Library and the Senior Center, just so that we can put it on the website and so that our media partners can also be reporting out. Again, we would encourage anyone from the public who has business with municipal offices as much as possible to conduct that over the phone electronically and only come into the buildings as a last resort, but if they absolutely have to come to the counter, the Facilities Manager has been very proactive in the last week, and we've put down markings on the ground to indicate social distancing and where people need to stand. So it's not going to look like the town hall of old.
Right. And to residents, town hall is safe.
Yes.
However, it should be your last resort if a phone call or going online is not enough.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
A couple of questions, chief, if I could.
Sure.
First, accept my most sincere appreciation for all the work you've done for us over the last 100-plus days. It's been remarkable. You've given us some great guidance and management. We appreciate that. Two things. Number one, once we reoccupy our government spaces, what is the protocol under the two scenarios? Number one, the protocol in the event that an employee has a member of their family who tests positive. The second, an employee tests positive. Tell me what happens in their respective buildings, if you will, under those two scenarios going forward.
Sure. So this is why it's important that we emphasize that even when people are in the workplace, that they continue to do the handwashing, the physical distancing, and the face coverings. If an employee has a family member who comes down with a diagnosis, then first step would be for them to get sent out for testing. They would be held out of work until that test result came back. If they then came back with a positive result, either whether it came from a family exposure or, you know, scenario number two of just an employee gets diagnosed, then we would do contact tracing, as we would with any other circumstance. And we would figure out, walk us through your schedule in the last couple of days, tell us who it is that you had close contact with. And they would walk us through, and we would ask questions like, did you use the break room? What door did you use to enter through? And we would try to identify through contact tracing who had what would be considered to be close contact. It is a droplet transferred virus, therefore intermittent contact, and someone who may have just passed in the hallway, or you may have waved and said hi to, that's not going to be a high index of suspicion for disease transmission. Obviously, if someone said, oh, I went out and I was sitting at the picnic table on my break, and we were chatting, and we were catching up, and yeah, we took our masks off because it's such an encumbrance to wear them all the time, then we would be looking at whether or not somebody else needed to be sent out for testing.
So in the former case, the individual is going to be tested soon after they identify a family member?
Correct.
And...
Even if they're asymptomatic.
They may not return to the workplace, however, until the test is, comes back negative. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's been consistent with how we've handled it at other municipal buildings in the last 100-plus days.
So the second one, to your point regarding tracing, that's great. If somebody comes down positive, they have to, they're out until they test negative. Is that, is that how we're doing it?
Correct. And we would evaluate what their work environment looks like. I mean, if it's an individual who works alone in their office, then we can just call for an extra clean of that office. If it's someone who works in an office that's cohabitated by other individuals, then we may be closing that for 24 hours while we not only do a deep clean, but also are sanitizing every single possible thing that people could have had exposure to.
Right.
So it's going to be on a case-by-case basis and looking at what their workflow and their working environment looks like.
And the employees understand these rules?
They should.
And made clear.
Absolutely.
Okay. Last point, earlier today, I had sent you an email based on some conversations I have with some of the town leaders.
Yes.
Leading up to town meeting. Before I get to that, it would appear as though Holliston has arrived at the most safe space it can be in for a town meeting since early March.
Yes.
We've deferred town meeting on two occasions out of abundance of caution. I think those were the right decisions, looking back. No point in risking further contamination. Holliston has gotten through this pandemic relatively safely comparatively, as you pointed it out.
Yes.
However, leading up to July 20th, you've got some work to do. I'd like to emphasize that I think you've got to reach out to our Facilities Director or Technology Director to make the space ready, but also please include the moderator and the town clerk, who will be integral to using the space. Folks are likely to encounter a different environment for seating and for speaking and for communicating.
Yes.
I think we've had this conversation, that's, one of our neighboring towns had a very nice guideline on their website. If you can find some time, put together a brief word document to put on our town website to let people know what they can expect when they arrive at town meeting.
Absolutely.
It would be very beneficial to set the expectation.
Sure.
Wear face coverings at all times. Please practice social distancing. If you're feeling not well, please stay home.
Right.
Do not come. Things like that, just very overtly let the ground rules be stated. In terms of comfort, we know that the cafeterium is not air-conditioned. If it is a hot night, I would encourage you to try and find a solution, if possible, for cooling and ventilation, but other than that, we'll let you do your job and get us ready for the 20th. I trust everything will go just great.
And we are coordinating with all of those disciplines that you already discussed. We have, we're going to be physically walking the space on Friday morning with technology, with schools, with facilities, and I believe that the town clerk will also be there.
This Friday?
This Friday. And I know that Facilities has already reached out to the schools with questions about the HVAC system, and if, after that email gets answered, and as we continue to dialogue in the next week, if we decide that we need some auxiliary equipment to supplement environmental controls that day, we've got a little bit of lead time to pull that off.
Two quick follow-up questions, and after the walkthrough on Friday, will you be updating, will you be providing a occupancy limit for the cafeterium for town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, my expectation is that after our walkthrough on Friday, and we finalize the details for all the AV and the AC and the flow of people, that my update to the board on Monday will have more details for you.
Okay. And one last question, then. You mentioned contact tracing for employees.
Yes.
Will there be any kind of sign-in for people coming into town hall visiting? So any resident coming into town hall, is that part of what you were planning? So does somebody have to sign, when they come to a desk, sign their name, say, I visited today?
Right. That has not been a best practice that I've seen in other communities, so it is not included right now.
Okay.
It's an interesting question, but I haven't heard of that coming up at any other municipality that's opened their, their buildings to the public.
Okay.
I mean, we will have a sign-in for town meeting, because that's more of a long-term
Yeah, right.
Interaction. Fortunately, the majority of people that must come into town hall or other municipal buildings, they're in and out fairly quickly, and therefore it doesn't meet the CDC definition of close contact.
So you're, yeah, you're looking at distance and time there, and you're not seeing that that exceeds a threshold where you would want to identify?
Correct. And honestly, if someone came down with that sort of a scenario, employees would probably be able to remember that that resident that was there for 20 minutes, or that, that new employee who it was taking long to get their onboard paperwork done. So they, they would probably know within a few days, you know, they would be able to think back who they interacted with.
I'm just thinking at work, we're not, we're not having visitors sign in?
Right.
Because they're coming to a specific, passing through and going to a specific place.
Correct.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else, Ben?
I'm good, thank you.
Quick question, piggybacking on Ben's inquiry about the CARES Act budget.
Yes.
When do you think we'll see our first request for expenditures come from you to ask for approval to the state?
So after your last meeting last week, I had reached out to the Executive Office of Administration and Finance and said, when is the guidance document that talks about reporting coming out, so that I can assure the people I report to that were on board with the plan for this? And they said it's still being developed, so...
So we have the money, but we don't have the directions?
The directions are how to spend it.
Have a nice place to be.
The directions are, we can spend it in certain ways. They haven't figured out the mechanics of how it is we're going to report what we've spent. Right. But I'm on record, and I've got a response back that says, when it comes out, we'll issue it to you.
Is this an ask-for forgiveness, not permission moment?
Not while we're on camera.
Yeah, and I also don't think, we're not in a space yet where you need to start expending funds from that urgently.
No, no. I mean, and again, everything that we're doing right now, with the exception of the $1,900 request that the board approved for parks, for the touchless faucets, everything was already built into the model back when I was down in the 150 to 175.
That's a straight-up reimbursement.
Before it became 550. Yeah. It was all stuff that was, you know, like, things like, I spent close to $600 for reopening supplies for municipal buildings, just to make sure that we've got extra masks, we've got hand sanitizer, we've got wipes. Those were all things that were built into my model of between now and December. So those weren't, you know, major expenses.
Right.
And just real quick on an update there. So the Massachusetts Municipal Association has a Fiscal Policy Committee that I'm on, and they asked on Monday, they asked for feedback from municipalities to present at a hearing on what sort of direction here with the CARES Act. And one of the things I put forward, and one of the things other members put forward, was more flexibility on the CARES Act funding to use to replace revenue loss or loss of revenue.
Right.
Right now, that's not allowed.
That was not part of the legislation.
My expectation and hope is that the Fiscal Policy Rep from the MMA is going to present that at the hearing, I think it was today, to request for more flexibility, so that if we don't have the money spent on expenses, we could use it to replace revenue loss. We shall see.
We've got six months.
Any questions from those joining us via Zoom this evening for Chief Cassidy? Hearing none. Chief, I believe you are. Good to go. Thanks so much.
Thanks for your continued support.
Very good. Next on our agenda is review of the town warrant. Folks want to grab a copy or make themselves familiar with the latest version that has come to us. So this document has gone through a variety of different iterations. I've reviewed it several times. I believe we are now up to a total of 20, 23 articles? I should say, down to 23. Mr.?
Mr. Karen?
Yes, please, Mr. Ritter. Go ahead.
Hi. I think that on your agenda is the annual expenditure and warrants to be approved, number two?
We have none this evening, Mr. Ritter.
You have no warrants. Okay. And then number three would be public comment.
I'm conflating. We're doing annual town meeting warrant at number seven. My apologies. Thank you. But to be clear, Jeff...
You can go to number seven if you'd like to. I don't care.
Well, just to point out, Mr. Sparrell made inquiry. Apparently, the town accountant had no warrants to be signed this evening.
Okay.
All right.
That's fine.
But thanks for pointing that out. We'll get to the town meeting warrant in just a moment. Let us move on to public comment. Mr. Sparrell?
I just want to mention this Saturday, July 11th, from 9:00 to noon, at the Adams Middle School is Holliston Household Hazardist Waste Day. So that's on Woodland Street on this Saturday. So make sure if you have anything that follows the guidelines, they're on the town website that'll indicate the items that are appropriate to bring to this occasion. So for residents who are wondering, that's this Saturday from July 11th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon at the Adams Middle School. Thank you.
That's fine. Any public comment?
I have no public comment tonight. Thank you.
I have none as well. Anybody on the Zoom that would like to make a public comment this evening? Hearing done. We will move on to the report of the town administrator. Mr. Ritter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may know, this is my last meeting with board, and I just wanted to say thank you for all the help and support that you've given me over the years for being your town administrator. I had a very good and productive conversation with your new town administrator yesterday morning from about 10:00 until 10:30. I highlighted some of the open issues that for him are going to consume a fair amount of his time. And again, I just wanted to thank the Emergency Management Director again, as you reiterated about all his leadership skills during this pandemic. It's not anything that any one of us have ever dealt with before, but he has done an extraordinary job in shepherding the community through and being safe. So that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Also, I just wanted to say, and I don't say it enough, but I want to thank all the staff over the course of my tenure here for the past five years for all their help and support in getting me to, getting me to where I am now. And, you know, it's, it'll, it'll be good. After Friday, I'll be done. And you can turn the page, and as I said to Travis, I said that almost without exception, when we've hired new department heads, new department heads have always been more talented and, you know, spectacular, if you will, than the previous one. And I am confident that that's going to happen in my position as well. So I just want to say that. Also, I know James is on the, on the call. I don't have his notes from his updates, but James, if you had any updates that you I don't have his notes from his updates, but James, if you had any updates that you wanted to provide the board on your facilities management?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, you can.
So I wanted to give this an update, and if you'd give me a second, let me pull up the email I sent to Mr. Ritter. There we go. On 260 Woodland Street, the final inspection happened actually today on the DEP. Unfortunately, they find a couple areas that needed attention. So that'll be remedied hopefully tomorrow, and the site will be officially cleared by then. Time pressed doors are scheduled to be replaced by what's originally this week is now moving to next week. The bid documents for the replacement of the town hall doors have been posted on the website and on my. That bid closes on April 14th. We've implemented high-touch cleaning for the town hall, the library, 1350, and the senior center. We have something that's going to come through and wipe down all of the high-touch airuses, doorknobs, light switches, toilet fixtures, lavatory fixtures, door pushplates. And they're going to cycle through all of these buildings twice a day, which will really help cut down on the transmission of the pollinant team. And the town hall septic system, we have our third iteration of a design. I'm now working with the assessors to come up with an easily value for that because that septic system is going to be on the congregational church. And that's also in process. That is my update in terms of facilities.
Thank you, James. I just have to say as a footnote that, you know, the facilities manager has taken a huge amount of work off my desk. And he's doing a very good job at following through with a lot of the things that I had on my desk. And thank you. And that's my report, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Any comments on Mr. Ritter's report?
Yeah, a couple. First, Jeff, thank you so much for your service here for Holliston. We really appreciate all the things that you've done for us. And we wish you well in your future endeavors and hope you find success in wherever you go. So thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to ask James a couple of questions if he still could.
I'm here.
Okay. So quickly, and I apologize if this might have been something that had come up previously in other meetings before I was on the board. But for 260 Woodland Street, once this process is completed, what are the next steps? What is going to be happening to that site after DEP says it's clean?
It's up to the town to decide what they want to do with that site. So it will be currently being used as a DPW, lack of a better word, storage site. So is there a tear up a road, maybe the place to put the scrap asphalt? You know, when they sweep the streets, they need a place to store, you know, the debris that they clean up from the streets or when they clean the catch basins, and they're stored there until they get basically a large pile and then they collect it and then take it off to a, you know, transfer facility. That's my understanding of what, you know, the use of the land is going to be. You know, it's the town property. They can, you know, choose what they would like to do.
Okay. You mentioned the bid for the town hall doors. I thought I heard you say April 14th. Could you just clarify the date that the bid closes?
August 14th.
Okay. No, no, that's okay. That's okay. It might have been. It might have been my ears, too. And then my last question to you is you mentioned the cleaning process that's taking place in the municipal buildings. Is that the process that, like, we had talked about, I believe Chief Cassidy came to us, was it last week, I think? And we had told him to tell you, basically, to hire vendor or to work towards cleaning. And I'm just wondering, is what you're describing, is that the follow-up from that particular conversation we had with the chief? He's nodding his head.
Absolutely.
Okay, cool.
This is an additional cleaning routine. Right now, of course, it's dependent on the actual building. But for example, in town hall, the cleaning has been twice a week. So that will remain. That's where they vacuum the carpets and then the waste pails and things like that. But this service is on top of that, and it's just basically cleaning the high-touch area.
Now, with the buildings opening up to some capacity, are we, is there a plan to increase the frequency of that cleaning? For example, town hall twice a week, is there any plan to increase that frequency?
Not unless there's an incident. But right now, the full cleaning, if you will, will maintain the regular schedule basically pre-COVID. And obviously, if there is an incident, then there's procedures that will be followed for deep cleaning and sanitation.
Okay. All right. Those are all the questions I have. So thank you.
Tina?
So just one for James there before I turn to Jeff. So continue with the current use at 260 Woodland Street until or if the town decides something different? That's your understanding?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
All right. And then Jeff, to you. I'll speak to the camera so I can look at you. Like we say to patients at the hospital, it was a pleasure working with you, but don't come back. In this case, I'm going to say it was a pleasure working with you, and please come back. Please come back to visit and say hello. I've thanked you before. I'll thank you again. You've been so kind and so professional with me my first year on the board. It meant a lot to me. It will always mean a lot to me. And I do wish you well in what you do next. And if you have a spot on your boat and you're ever looking for an extra passenger, I'm all in.
Thank you, Tina.
All right. Jeff, I'll echo all the kind words. We'd like to wish you well in your retirement. You've worked a long time in your life, and you're entitled to all the fruits of your labor, and we wish you the very best. I have a question for Mr. Keast, and probably Jeff, maybe a last task for you as well. James, is there any access restriction on the Woodland Street property right now? Is there anything that prohibits people from illegal dumping or anything like that?
There is a gate at the entrance. I mean, if someone wanted to walk past, walk through there, they could. They'd have to cut through the woods. But the gate entrance is blocked with a chain attached to some poles, and it's padlocked.
And what about posted signage?
There are no posted signage right now. No trespassing signs have been removed, as well as the asbestos signs have been removed. And then that was, you know, agreed upon by the DEP. What they found were a couple little spots, and there was no risk to anyone that goes back there. The bulk of the material has been removed. They did find a couple things, and Compass Restoration, who's the company that did the abatement work, is coming back with the DEP. I will be there myself. I'm allowed on the site. And we'll take care of the small issue that they found.
I would recommend that you put the no trespassing signs back up immediately, Mr. Keast, just to keep anybody from access onto that property. If I could turn to my two colleagues for a moment. My thinking on it is, at this point, we've spent some money here, considerable amount to clean a facility that had been contaminated. The future use of that site should be put under some consideration due to its location next to the rail trail. I would recommend to Mr. Ritter to inform Mr. Reese to cease and desist any additional dumping on that site until the town determines what its future use might be. I think having public works use it as a lay-down area for debris, material, and other product that comes from the roadways could potentially harm that area again. It's right near a water source, so we'd like to keep it clean until we figure out what we want to do from a planning perspective. Any thoughts on it?
I'm comfortable with that. I think it would, you know, be, I think it's a good idea to have a discussion about what to do with it and make sure that it's clean and stays that way for the foreseeable future. And I think that we, you know, we can have a future discussion to sort of see what we want to do and ponder what possible use we could have for that space.
That's fine.
There are two comments I would make. James, I think we had a, I believe we had a conversation about this a while ago. And I believe, if I've got it correct, you had said that the DEP did not have concerns about materials that were on-site, that their concerns were for the building and not materials that were piled on-site in terms of environmental concerns. I'm going on memory here, so please correct me if it's wrong.
Yeah, so the issue were the shingles. These are siding shingles, shaped file shingles, that were on the structure that contained asbestos.
Okay.
And when that building was demolished, those shingles then landed on the ground and broke up into tiny pieces. Some of that was scooped up and loaded into dumpsters prior to the involvement. And that material has been hauled away and treated. But the bulk of the project that's been going on for the past month has been cleaning up the debris out of the soils, picking the soils up and, you know, loading those in appropriate containers and taking them off-site.
Okay. Thank you. So John, I guess my comment would be that I don't disagree with you at all about contamination and pollution and the effect on the ground around. I would just want to be clear moving forward that when any action to cease and desist is not based on a DEP compliance or concern issue.
Correct.
Okay.
It's control of the site to maintain what it is today for future use.
Okay. And then my second comment is, I have spoken to Sean about this. It's come up in conversation. I don't believe they have another location to store materials that they currently. Again, my memory could be not correct on this, but I don't believe Sean has another site where he can store his materials. Not to say, again, that it's not something we should address, but if we make this effective immediately, does he have then a problem this week, next week, that he has no other location?
Well, I'd like to hear from him if that is the case, but I'd rather him not ask for forgiveness, to your point earlier.
Right, fair enough.
I'd rather direct through Mr. Ritter that he stop any future dumps until we have a plan in place about alternative sites for them to use.
Yep.
And then perhaps citizen interest or reuse of that space. Again, we spent some sum of money cleaning up this site. It is a very interesting location next to the rail trail. And I want to make sure that if it has future use, it can be done so without having to remove additional public works aggregate that can be found in someplace else.
And to that point, I know that the Trails Committee is obviously very interested in the type of use on parcels next adjacent to the trail. So I would think they have a strong interest in seeing that this use turn around.
Mr. Ritter, hearing some consensus from my colleagues, would you please direct Mr. Reese not to use that site until further notice and to prepare a plan for us on his intended use going forward for the products that are generated by public works and where he intends to put that stuff?
Yes, I can do that tomorrow morning.
Many thanks. And thanks again, Jeff.
Chairman, I do have.
Please go ahead, James.
Yeah, can I speak? That is James Keast, Facility Manager. Just so the board knows, there is a construction dumpster on-site. And once the DEP clears the site from, you know, the asbestos issues, I have a contractor coming in to clean up. There's a bunch of scrap metal on-site. There's pieces of chimney. There's some pallets. There's just a bunch of just general debris that's there that was not part of the original cleanup plan, you know, the abatement plan. So that will happen at that site as soon as he clears the area. Just so you know, there will be some activity going on there, but it really is to continue the cleanup effort.
Right. Need a director to secure the site, James. After you're done, please chain it up, lock it, and put those signs of no trespassing up so that the public stays away until further notice.
Absolutely.
Sound good?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Ritter?
No, I think I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We're going to move on to the Assistant Director for the Senior Center job posting. I see Bob Malone and Linda Marshall have joined us. Good evening, folks. How are you?
Good evening.
Who will be speaking, Linda, yourself or Bob?
I believe I will. I was not aware Bob was going to be on tonight.
He's there, but probably just listening in. So why don't you go ahead, Linda, and tell us about this posting?
Okay, so the posting is basically to replace our assistant director who moved to South Carolina in June. After consulting with Jeff, and I know he consulted with council, and with unanimous support from our board, Linda stayed on remotely from South Carolina through the summer, so her end date is September 1. So we are actually looking to replace that position. It is a grade 400 position, and to say that it was started at step 1. The current position is actually at a step 4. So that should bring in a savings for the year of about $3,000, but it's different. It's working remotely for us, and it's still going to be mostly remotely. It actually almost takes more time in that everything is done on a one-to-one basis. Linda is also remotely having to enter and overtake that position. We still have to keep all the statistics of everyone who attends our Zoom and remote programs, enter them manually into our system, make sure they send releases, get the releases. So she's been able to do all of that in South Carolina. In fact, is doing 95% of what she was actually doing up here since COVID shut us down. But with the start of reopening, and obviously this can't go on forever, we are working to a place.
What's the, if I may, real quick, what's the timeframe, Linda?
So we'll be looking for, if Linda's working until September 1, so early September.
Questions, Mr. Sparrell?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions. Is this job posting, has it changed since, from the previous hire, or has there been any changes to it?
Nothing substantial. I found a couple of typing errors, but basically it is essentially the same. We will have more of a focus, especially in the new environment, of really needing someone who's strong in technology because that will, does use a lot of technology, even more so now as we're reaching out and helping seniors to be able to use it.
Okay. And the current assistant director is working 37 and 1/2 hours per week?
That is correct.
And my last question is, since this person, the current assistant director is in South Carolina, is there, is there a mechanism or a process? You don't have to get into specifics. I'm just wondering if there's one. And this might be a question for Chris Mayo, but getting the computer from them, if it's a town-owned computer, or any other keys or anything like that? Is there something, a process that we're going to undertake to do that?
So the keys I actually have before she left, when she wasn't up here.
Okay.
The computer does belong to the senior center. She has a phone from the senior center. And the plan is for those to be shipped back when she's finished.
Okay.
And Linda's been extremely reliable and a very valuable employee, so I see no issue with that happening.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Just basic, just have one question, Linda, about the job requirements. Is this an associate degree, bachelor degree, high school degree?
Bachelor's degree is preferred, but also appropriate experience can be substituted.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
I see Bob Malone's joined us. Bob, is there anything you want to add to Ms. Marshall's report?
Yeah, just my one comment would be that even though the job title is Assistant Director, this really is not an administrative job. The three full-time people there, including Linda, are really hands-on. And particularly in these days, when we cannot rely on our volunteer staff because most of them are in a critical category, and we have not been able to use them, that all of the hands-on work being done at the center is being done by Linda and Marty at this point. And even though the title is Assistant Director, it really is a very much hands-on job. So don't be misled by the appearances of the title.
Very well. I have no further questions. Linda and I had a conversation last week when the email came through. She was quite helpful filling me in on the perspective that the Council on Aging has for the position. So I'll take a motion to approve the posting for the Assistant Director Senior Center job.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Linda, we'll be posting that. We wish you the very best on that process. And be sure to send us the candidates when you're ready for appointment, okay?
Okay, I will do that.
Mr. Ritter has his, I'm sorry, go ahead, Linda.
I have a question. I have a question, Linda. How's the weather in San Francisco?
In San Francisco? It's beautiful, but you know, there's a lot more COVID out here.
Fair enough.
And Jeff, while you're talking, I did want to also wish you the very best. I thank you for your support to myself and to the senior center.
Thank you.
We'd like you to enjoy some of our events back when we could have them. And we're hoping at some point in the future, we'll be able to be hosting them again.
Thank you, Linda, very much.
You're welcome. And if I may say a couple of other things?
Please go right ahead.
So I too want to acknowledge and thank Chief Cassidy, Mr. Keast, and Mr. Moles and their supporters. We've worked our way through this process and will continue to be working through this process of safely opening. We're certainly a bit nervous doing that with the population that we serve, but I think we have a decent plan on how we're doing it right now and given the very low numbers in this area. And then the other is that later on, you'll have on your agenda a gift grant donation from the Superrit. And I would just like the board and the public to know that although the Superrit signs that check about three years ago, Chris started putting up a small donation jar for Meals for Seniors at his counter. So this really comes from the town of Holliston, from the patrons of the Superrit, and they're so grateful. So with $3,000 that has helped us serve a lot of meals and ensuring the needs of our senior population. So we thank Chris, and we thank the people of Holliston.
Thanks for pointing that out, Linda. You're absolutely right. The generosity of folks that drop their coins and dollars into that can adds up. And through Chris's good work, it obviously provides you and your, and the people you serve a great benefit. So thank you for pointing that out. Anything else, Linda?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Malone, are you all set?
I am all set, and thank you very much for allowing my comments.
You're welcome. Good evening. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, the Depot Package Store. A matter has come before us regarding an incident that occurred at the Depot Package Store on Friday night, June 26th, when Holliston Police responded there. Based on an investigation, it was determined that an employee at the package store sold and furnished alcohol to an intoxicated person in violation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, Section 69. Members were given a copy of the police report. I'll open up this item for discussion, starting with Mr. Sparrell. If you have any questions or any comments you'd like to make on this matter. Unfortunately, I don't see Chief Stone on the call, so the comments will have to be among us with possible follow-up through Mr. Ritter.
Okay. So this is, it's unfortunate what happened here. And I think, I do believe, like, you know, based on the, it looks like the recommendation should be to think about requiring training for folks at the, I believe for folks working at the Depot Package Store, if I'm reading this correctly, not just the individual who sold the product. But I guess the only question that I would throw out there is, is this something that we should require of anyone selling, getting the license from us? Or is this something that we should only do upon an infraction of this kind?
I think we've got to be careful here. According to the research that Chief Stone did, Ben?
Yes.
The Alcohol Beverage Control Commission only recommends this training.
Okay.
It is not required. And furthermore, he did a review of our bylaws. The bylaws do not make reference to any such requirement.
Okay.
I think if this board comes to a conclusion that we are directing such training to occur as a result of an infraction, it takes on a different dimension. It would require some evidence that they undertake.
And we'd have to change the bylaws in those cases, too.
Yeah, but in this case, I'm not sure we can go much further than that.
No, you know, that makes sense. Okay.
That's fine.
So you only get really one chance to get it right, I feel, especially where you have new ownership to send a strong message. And so my initial reaction was different than what I'm going to say now. I did follow up to understand that there was no injury to any, out of this incident, there was no, there were no injuries. There was no motor vehicle violation associated with this. And we do not have a bylaw that gives us any teeth in the matter. So because it's new ownership, I want to send the message very strongly that we don't tolerate this type of action or decision or practice in our town. But I agree with the recommendation that we strongly recommend training for them. And we send that with a letter.
My thinking is that we need to send them a letter of warning associated with the infraction and that any future incidences similar to this may result in more strict discipline, up to including revocation of the license. But in addition to the letter, I'd like to also include a directive that all individuals who work at the depot successfully complete this server training within the next period of time, three months, six months, whatever we determine we want that to be. And the letter can come from the town administrator to the business owner and perhaps even through the chief of police. I guess that's a question for the town administrator. Jeff, in this case, if we are going to send a message to a liquor store on an infraction? Jeff, in this case, if we are going to send a message to a liquor store on an infraction, would that notice go through you or the chief?
The licensing authority, which is the board. And so, you know, a letter would be created, directed toward the license holder from the licensing authority, which is the board of select, board.
Okay, so hearing that, I would recommend through consensus that the board direct the town administrator to draft a letter of warning to Depot Liquors, and directing them that all employees complete the A, B, C, C server training within the next three to six months, as training requirements allow.
So moved.
Yeah. Was that what that Tina?
Second with a comment, which would be, Jeff, if you could reach out to Chief Stone to know if this is an incident that is very rare, is this something that should trigger a review of our bylaws?
This is the first, this is the first event that I'm aware of over five years.
Okay. All right, so then my second stands, is just that.
Very good. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, that carries. Mr. Ritter, would you prepare the documentation? Get that ready for mailing, for our board signature.
I'm sure Mr. Hearn will take care of that.
The annual town meeting warrant. We are now upon the item. I started earlier, so sorry about that, folks. Let's tackle the warrant. So as I mentioned earlier, we are down to, it looks like 23 articles. And that includes the citizens' petition article.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. I think we're down to 23 articles. The warrant is to be signed and to be posted tomorrow morning. And we're moving on to the motions. And I'm up to Article 20, I think, on the motions. And I'm going to be sending that probably the final, or at least my first draft of the motions to town council probably tomorrow morning. And I'm going to be turning that over to him to shepherd it through with the chairman of the finance committee.
So Jeff, there is a one item on page one. I alerted to you earlier. You have noted that in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Holliston, who are qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the Holliston High School auditorium.
Yes, yep, got it. Okay, I'm sorry. Yep, I saw that now.
That needs to be cleaned up.
Yes.
I'll, you know, at this point?
I think the finance committee was, had spoken about moving the senior center improvements into their budget, the $12,000 in the capital.
Article 13, article, you moved up there, didn't you?
Yeah, I guess I jumped ahead a little.
Can you hold that, Ben?
Sure.
We'll just move on our way up. Let me just go through each article, and if either of you have any comments or concerns, we'll flag it. Article 1, here reported the select board. Article 2, here reported the finance committee. Article 3, authorize the treasurer collector to sell for close text titled properties. Article 4, compensation for elected officials. That language, I believe, is reflective of the changes the council had given us recently. Article... Four.
Five is the title.
Yep, thank you. Article 5, the amended consolidated personal bylaws, Section 29, job and wage classification plan. So this item reflects some changes to two management-grade positions. The first was the M6 range was modified once we hired the town administrator. The new town administrator, his salary is shown to be at the midpoint. And so consequently, we modified the men and the max to capture the midpoint being 165. The men is now 150, the max is now 180. You may recall that, certainly you, Tina, that the 180 was in the upper range of the salary recommended by the Paradigm Associates during the search for the town administrator. That's where that number came from.
And so that's the data, so to speak, that drove this change here for M6. Okay.
The M5 levels capture basically our public facilities, department heads, our fire chief, and our police chief. There will be some modifications made to that range for our police chief this year, whose contract is up. So we modify the max range to capture, again, the expected range of salaries from the fire chief up to the police chief. That's all that was, was an attempt to give us more room to capture median.
And again, we have data there from our labor council, who has done some research into other communities, what their salary ranges are, or salaries are for chiefs, based on experience and so on.
That, by the way, those negotiations will probably start, restart after town meeting sometime in August, September, and so forth, as the budget, state budget is made known to us. Any questions on that, Ben?
No.
Okay, that's moving on. Article 6, authorize the select board to sell surplus equipment. Article 7, authorization to expend Chapter 90, state aid for highways program. Chapter, excuse me, Article 8, amend the interest rate per annum for the board assessors. Article 9, amend income requirements, board of assessors. Article 10, revolving funds, spending limits, board of selectmen. Jeff, could you make that change, Article 10? Are you with me, Jeff?
Yeah, I am with you, but what change do you want to make?
Under sponsored by, it should be the select board, not board of selectmen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yep, got it.
Article 11, fiscal year '21 budget, the finance committee, that's the omnibus. Article 12, transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the capital expenditure fund, select board. Article 13, capital expenditures. Ben Sparrow, you had an item here you wanted to talk about.
Yes, so the finance committee last night made the recommendation to move the senior center improvements out of the capital expenditure and move it into their budget, their actual budget, their operating budget.
We have members of the finance committee on here. Mr. Alfred, Mr. Murphy, do you concur with this report?
Yes, it's been Murphy. Yes.
I'm sorry, Ben, go ahead.
Do you want to talk, Dan?
No, you can go in.
Okay. Yeah, we did vote, because I believe Ken looked at, can talk to somebody regarding what it is, and it's not really capital, it's a whole bunch of different things that are less than the amount. So we put it in the operating budget with the idea that we're going to take it out when we, or look at it next year when we have the operating budget to review, but it didn't really fall into a capital expenditure line, so.
Okay.
And just to be clear, we, this is Dan, we use the 2020 free cash that the special legislation allows us to use for 2021 spending to do that. So it's not really operating, it's not really continuing. But that's how we voted, so if the select board doesn't agree with that, we'd have to figure that out right before town meeting, which we could always do.
I do notice Ms. Marshall and Mr. Malone are still with us. Let me start with you, Mr. Malone. Any, are you privy to the finance committee's changes as reported? Any concerns with us if we were to remove this $12,000 from the capital items?
No, I'm not, but I know that we've had conversations in prior years with the finance committee about things like carpeting and painting that become big-ticket items, but really it's hard to squeeze them into the definition of a capital purchase. And so we've had some conversations about the best way to treat that. I think this is an excellent way to deal with it. Pull it out of capital, because it really isn't capital. Put it in the operating budget as a one-time item for the, for next year, and then remove it as a one-time item in the following budget. I think that's an appropriate way to deal with it.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Well, I have Mr. Murphy and Mr. Alfred on the line. I also understand that some changes might have been made to the committee and field item. Did that go through last night? Are you sticking with $500,000, or was that number modified by your committee?
We voted yes, but we want to come back and we've asked the school to give us the proof. We had several people in the committee suggesting that it should be a lower amount. So we might revisit it, come before town meeting. So the vote could be revised, and our goal was to get lower than 500, because the only, the argument to have it on this town meeting was that we could get a better deal.
Right.
So we considered having half a million dollars, which it shouldn't be that much. If they can get a better deal, let's do it. But if we can't, then we shouldn't be spending the money.
Mr. Sparrow, if my math is correct, with the redaction of the senior center improvements at 12,000, the total amount is now $1,038,834. You concur?
I concur.
I'll take a motion to accept that modification to Article 13.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Mr. Ritter, you have a change on Article 13. Did you pick up that, please?
Yep, I got that. $1,038,834.
Correct, thank you. Moving on, Article 14, report of the community preservation, that's the CPC. Article 50, uh, stand by. Article 15, transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the stabilization fund. Article 16, the solar panels at the landfill, select board. Article 17, Central Street Fire Station easement agreement for solar electric power, that's the select board. Article 18, establish the revolving fund for the Community Farm Committee, that's the select board. Number 19, retirement system stabilization fund, select board. Any comments from anybody on this one?
I, you know, I'm not, I kind of want to wait on this particular article. I mean, I don't have, you know, if we want to put it in there, I would actually recommend a motion for indefinite postponement, because I think this is a good idea. But I think we need to really look at our retirement, look at retirement a little more holistically than just this article. And I would ask that we remove this from the warrant, but, and we revisit it, we kind of like put together a bigger plan, the more comprehensive plan of retirement than this article.
Ben Murphy, if you can jump in on this, you had some very particular, specific comments that I picked up on last night. Would you be willing to share those again in terms of Article 19?
Of course, I'll share. The reasons I said no, and I was concerned about it, I think we need to, just like Ben reiterated, is to take a holistic look at the whole thing. It's a huge liability, no question about it, $27 million. When I realized it was that much, I choked. It's more than right now than the OPEB liability. So it is something we need to tackle and think about. My concerns, I don't know necessarily having it through the stabilization fund, especially if we can just, can't even put it into real high-yield investments. We wouldn't be able to have that money right now. They wouldn't accept it. It would have to grow. So we need to really think how we're going to do it. And I think talking to the people who are on the OPEB committee, and the resources there, and saying, what are we going to do? How are we going to tackle these two huge liabilities that are out there? Rather than just throwing the money, setting up this, and then having our second thought. I mean, I'm of the opinion, I don't really think it should be a stabilization fund. I think it should be cut off and we can't touch it. With the stabilization fund, the town could still have the ability to take money away from there. So I'd be hesitant to put it into a stabilization fund, but that's my opinion, not the committee's opinion, so.
Ben, can you educate, can you educate me for a minute? What is it that the OPEB fund is that's different as a vehicle, an investment vehicle, than a stabilization fund? So you mentioned we're limited in investments in a stabilization fund. That makes a lot of sense to me. And that there are, with a stabilization fund, you have ability to withdraw for other reasons. So what is the name of the vehicle that the OPEB fund is in?
There was a special legislation that was set up, we got approved from the state house to do this, set it up, and it's a separate fund specifically for other post-employment retirement benefits. Something similar. The problem with right now, the $50,000, my understanding, through Ken, who heard it from Mary, so tell a tree, telephone, the $50,000 is too little for the PRIT, the state house, state investment program to accept. They would accept something larger to invest. $50,000 is too small. Therefore, right now, we're just the earning money market amounts, which, as we all know, are less than, you know, if we're lucky, we're getting 50 basis points, half a percent. So I think we need to take a step back. If we're going to do anything, the original thought was, hey, we're going to take the $50,000 from the amount that we have budgeted for the liability that we have to pay for this year, and instead of paying the whole amount, we get a credit for paying early, that amount will go into it. I would say we just continue doing what we're doing, crediting, keeping crediting, and then come with a plan next year and figure out what we need to do. What's the best vehicle for setting this up? Should it be an OPEB-like thing, where we get special legislation? Should we do the stabilization fund, investing the money through PRIT? There's a lot of things that I think we need to explore, rather than just say, this is one thing S and P mentioned. I think we should, but I don't think, this is the best way right now. I think we just have so many thoughts, so many ideas out there, and we need to cover our bases, so.
How did the finance, if I could, how did the finance committee vote on that item?
7-0 to indefinite postponement.
Very good. Any other comment?
Did I answer all your questions, by the way? I just want to make sure, Tina.
Yeah, no, what I'm hearing you say is that the intention is, you're okay with the intention, but not with the vehicle.
I don't know necessarily if this is the right vehicle. It was just, this is the only option that's given. I think we need to weigh our options and see what's the best thing for the employees, what's the best thing for the town. Maybe it is, but I don't think just by putting $50,000, it won't return enough right now with only $50,000. So we're going to do what we need to put more real money in there, and not just a $50,000 thing.
I think it's a larger conversation that we need to have to discuss how we're going to fund that liability. And I think this is, you know, this is, it's good intentions, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's ready. You know, there's not, I think we need a little more work to do on it. That's my opinion. I think we have somebody.
Yeah, I heard a voice in the background.
Somebody else trying to come into the conversation? Hearing none.
Oh, is Sharon on the call?
Sharon, did you want to say something on this, or Mary, if you're there? We have a phone number on the line, but no identification. So if you are there and you want to speak, speak up.
That's 3142. I think she just went off.
One of the things, hi, go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, that the, you know, 50 may not be a whole lot of money. We can put the money in PRIT. We were just trying to get it started. So if we get 50 this year and 50 next year, if we've got it in the stabilization fund, it'll at least build, and build faster than us just throwing the extra yearly, the, you know, 30, 40,000. We can pay it directly, but if we can put it in the stabilization fund in a couple of years, I mean, smaller amounts, I get it. We're not putting a million bucks, but it was a start. And then we can, you know, invest with PRIT and, you know, Mary's got other investment vehicles that we do well in. So we were, you know, as opposed to just always kind of kicking it down the road, we were hoping to just get something started, get some amount of money. I mean, this is how we started OPEB. It started in the stabilization fund until you got special legislation, and then you dumped $4 million into OPEB and got started. So we're, even if we do special legislation for the retirement as well, we were just trying to get it structured, so it did not seem like a very bad idea to get it in a stabilization fund and let's start building while we decide what other vehicle we may want to take. But it made more sense to at least stop depositing money that we can invest and get more bang for our buck when you decide what the actual vehicle is going to be.
Thank you, Sharon. Tina, did you have some else to add?
Mr. Chairman, Dan Alfred, am I right?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Dan.
Just, unfortunately, at this point, we don't even have $50,000. We pretty much whittled everything down to bare bones, and we just got a couple thousand dollars at the bottom of the registry, so we'd have to find that $50,000.
Well, there is that, there is that, there is that fire department gift account, Dan. I don't know if you've looked at that, but. No, the chief's having a slow burn over there. Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
But either way, I mean, you know, that's, the way we did it with OPEB, as Sharon pointed out, is we sort of started sort of a side pocket thing in our regular stabilization fund, if you will, and just sort of tracked how much we put in there for that purposes. So if we do kind of in October come upon, you know, a windfall of extra money, and we wanted to sort of. wanted to sort of put it in there as we sort of figured out what the best way to do this was, that we could also do that, right? We don't actually have to set up a separate stability.
Put it where?
Still there, Dan? Dan, did you finish up? I think we lost Dan. Okay.
I'm back.
Okay, go ahead.
Where did I drop off?
We got the gist of what you were saying with respect to the October town meeting, perhaps having some money available to put in here.
If we had it, we could put it in the stabilization, our normal stabilization fund, and just sort of track it as a earmark like we did with OPEB.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Tina, did you have anything else to add?
Yep.
I mean, I'm, I, my thought would be that if there's a conversation coming down the road, if we're removing Article 19 with the plan to have a conversation down the road, that we, somehow we have to, it sounds like from Vin's comments that the 50,000 is too small, and when it starts to make sense for special legislation and a fund for that, you're talking about 1.5 million, which is what the OPEB is. So any future conversation, I would want to see narrowing that gap a little bit. That's, I guess, I'm not articulating myself well here, but I hear that 50,000 is too low. I'm summarizing very, very grossly here. And 1.5 million makes a lot of sense for an OPEB-like, OPEB fund. That's, that's a big difference. And so any future conversations should look to address that, that we are putting in sufficient funds to address our $27 million liability for the Middlesex Retirement Fund and...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I agree, and I think that, you know, I'd like to see this, like, I think, you know, I understand the intentions, you know, to get something started, but I, my concern is, is number one, you know, the, the return on the investment, but then also, you know, what are the guardrails? What are we, what's the mechanism that by which it's taken out? You know, like, when do we take it out? When it hits X number of dollars? I'd like to, you know, if this is the route we want to take, I'd like to have more, a little bit more plan and process in place with how we use it, and then instead of just sticking it in a place that we find in six years that we forgot that it was, there was an account that was created, and I don't want something like that to happen. You know, that's kind of my concern there. So I'd like, I'd like to wait until we can have more of a conversation about how to do this. Maybe it's a bigger conversation about all retirement, maybe it's just this fund, but at least a bigger conversation with some processes in place.
Mr. Murphy, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I just want to say, I agree totally with Tina that we should be, this is something that I wasn't really thinking about. I'm like, if retirement will let us know when they're going to go defunct, I mean, we need to actually fund it. I think by seeing the two large numbers, the OPEB and the Middlesex Savings Bank, I mean, the Middlesex Retirement Board liability on our balance sheet was striking, and it shocked me, and I think it's, I will make this promise, that I will be a pain in the rest of the committee's ear to say we have to think about doing something and make a plan. I can't say it'll be October. My goal would be October, but I don't know where we're going to be and if we can actually talk to other people and get a decent plan. I think Travis, I know he's on the line. This is something we need to think about, and we're, I don't know other towns are doing it, but I think it's something we owe to the people who have worked in this town for long, that they will be having retirement funds, and it's not, we can't necessarily rely on Middlesex.
Well, Vin, I'll...
We do have that, you know, million-dollar liability.
I'll take you at your word and assume it's not the daiquiri you're drinking on your tropical beach there that's speaking, but that...
I wish. No, thank you.
I tend to think that at this point, to borrow a phrase from the now-departed Select Board member, this needs more time in the oven. It seems as though some consensus is building that the town needs a more of a strategic approach to its retirement system strategy. It's not that what Sharon and Mary have put forth to us, and by the way, I believe it is in some form of structure, what our auditor recommended following our bond call earlier this year. I believe that ultimately, a long-term plan, a well-thought-out plan that is discussed with our colleagues at the Finance Committee is something that we can probably make use of. So I'll take a motion to remove Article 19 from the warrant with the intention that it will receive further study and review by the incoming town administrator for the development of a proper strategic plan for the Middlesex Retirement Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Just, I will assume then also that we have collaborative discussions with the Finance Committee to move it forward, and that's certainly what's being indicated, so it's great.
Yep. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Ritter, we are striking Article 19.
Understood.
Article 20, road acceptances by the Select Board. That title has been changed to reflect the fact that it's not retroactive. Article 21, Washington Street at Woodland and High Street Traffic Signal LED Upgrade. Article 22, Stormwater Land Disturbance Bylaw Planning Board. Article 23, Protecting Consumers and Animals in Holliston. That is the petition article, and that concludes the warrant as submitted. Any final comments from my colleagues? Mr. Sparrow?
No comments.
Ms. Heine?
John, we will visit the idea of a consent agenda as a motion on the floor on the evening of town meeting.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Ritter, you have some edits to make. Page one, remove Holliston High School. Article 10, change name Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Got it.
Article 13, remove senior center improvements for 12,000, adjust the bottom line to 1,038,834.
Got it.
Remove Article 19.
Got it. So, Mr. Chairman, just so you know, the motions have not been finalized yet, and I have drafted, and I think I sent to you a draft of the motions up to Article 20, but it contemplates consolidating into one motion a consent agenda. So I just want, this is going to be on your agenda next week, so I want you to be fair of that, that the motions are going to probably consolidate at least a half a dozen articles that are routine articles into one motion. And the town moderator and town council are pretty much in agreement with that approach.
I think it'd be a, I think it would be an effective tool for this town meeting to have that kind of an approach to non-controversial articles to accelerate the business of the town, if you will. So I appreciate that work, Jeff.
Yeah.
With respect to the motions, this evening, we were hoping to sign the warrant, which I believe we will. Do I need to take a motion to approve the warrant, Jeff, as edited?
Yes. Yes, please.
And then with respect to the motions, those can come on Monday?
Absolutely, absolutely, because, you know, some of the, some of the consent calendar, consent agenda items might not, I mean, they may not be controversial to me, but they may be controversial to you. So you're going to have to wrestle with that next Monday.
I'll take a motion to approve the July 20th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Mr. Ritter, you have your vote. We'll look forward.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on.
We'll get that posted tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Donna, you have the signature pages for us tonight, right there in the packet? Great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Board Business Annual Bids for DPW. Is this you, Mr. Ritter, or do we have some documents to look at?
Well, you have documents to look at, but these are routine bid documents that the DPW...
File.
...choose every year.
Can the clerk read those for the record, please? Not the whole thing, just the topic. What items we're bidding.
Okay. So we have a memorandum dated June 22nd, 2020, from Tom Smith, Superintendent at the DPW, to the Select Board. We had two bid openings on June 17th, 2020, for fiscal year 2021 road rehabilitation, reclamation, and milling, cold plating. We recommend that the Select Board award the contracts to the lowest bidders indicated below. For reclamation, Murray Paving and Reclamation at $67,000. Milling, Tread Milling Company at $83,420.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I said second.
Those are approved.
Yes, okay.
Now, is Mr. Sparrow on the second, Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Ms. Donna? Thank you. We all set with those? Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to appointments. We have appointments for the auxiliary police, parking clerk, deputy collector of taxes, special labor counsel, and the on-call emergency medical technician. Does the clerk have the names of those individuals being appointed in the file, or?
Yes. So I'll go through, so the, for the auxiliary police, there are two nominees to be appointed for one-year terms for each of them. Their names are Anthony Langill and James Henchy. I apologize if my pronunciation is off.
Take a motion to appoint Mr. Henchy and Ms. Langill as auxiliary police in the town of Holliston.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That carries. Next one, Ben?
So, all right, so for the parking clerk and deputy collector of taxes, it is the same entity. It's Kelly and Ryan, and the name is Joe Bishop. That's for a one-year term to be parking clerk and deputy collector of taxes.
I will make a motion to, the last name was Ryan?
It's Kelly and Ryan is the name of the firm.
Kelly and Ryan.
Mm-hmm.
Kelly and Ryan as the parking clerk for the town of Holliston. Do you have a second?
Second.
I looked it up, and it is, I, I looked at it, because I thought the same thing. I thought is that, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't a person, and it is a firm that does that for...
All set?
Yes, second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Next one, deputy.
So, labor counsel, for a one-year term, nominee is Dan Brown.
Second. Oh, so moved, rather.
Second.
Nominate Dan Brown, special labor counsel.
And I second that.
Second. Mr. Sparrow's the second. All those in favor, aye.
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 And then finally, we have a reapportment of an EMT, an on-call EMT named Paul Weston, and he is reappointed for, what is the length of time he'd be appointed for?
No term.
No term? Okay. So there's a, an, a motion for appointment of an on-call emergency technician named Paul West, for Paul Weston.
Do you have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That carries. So we got the parking clerk and the deputy collector of taxes in there?
Yes.
All done?
That was Kelly and Ryan.
Okay. Moving on. The annual town report. This item will be used as a handout, also being made available on our town website prior to town meeting. The document reflects the activities of the town of Holliston for the period ending June 30th, 2019. It's the receipt and expenditures. It's quite voluminous and informative. It's got the meeting minutes of the two town meetings that were held, payroll for all town employees, as well as some feedback from our departments on their achievements over the last year. On this item, Mr. Ritter, do we need a vote to approve the annual town report?
Yes, I would prefer that you have a motion to approve the annual town report.
Any comments on the content of the annual town report, Mr. Sparrow?
I have no comments.
Ms. Heine?
I have not yet reviewed it.
I thumb through it, but I didn't read every page.
I'm just looking at...
I want to point out that this report was prepared by a host of people in town who are rallying around and trying to get work done.
Sure.
While we're short-staffed. Much appreciated. There seems to be a fair amount of updates annually for content and accuracy, and we want to thank them for their hard work on doing so. I'd like to take a motion to approve the 295th Annual Report for the town of Holliston.
So moved.
So moved. Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Heine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Gifts, donations, local grant acceptances for the senior center and the fire department. The clerk, have that information for us?
Let's see, I have, first up, let me make sure that I'm not skipping something here. So I have a gift to the Fire Department Gift Fund. It is from the Mohawk Path residents, and it is in, thanks for the birthday drive-by parade that they had there. It is for $100, and the account to be credited will be, is number 28550-45314, which is the fire gift account.
Anyone hear that?
I'll take a motion to accept the donation of $100 to the fire department's gift account.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Next one?
So the next one is a donation from the Suparet to the senior center in support of the senior nutrition program in the amount of $400. The account to be credited, it is 295541-45650, which is the nutrition fund.
Okay, move to accept $400 donation from Suparet to the senior center for their nutrition program.
I have a motion to have a second, Mr. Sparrow.
You have a second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That carries. Anything else in your folder of fun there?
Uh, no.
Local grant acceptance?
There is nothing about a local grant acceptance that I'm...
Just the donation. Very good.
Just the donations.
Chairman's prerogative, I'm going to move goals, objectives, and liaison assignments just to the end of our agenda so we get rid of, get some of these other business items, if you may.
Sure.
Letter to congressional and state representatives. Do each of you have a copy of this proposed letter?
Yes.
Was this drafted by you, Mr. Ritter?
No, it was drafted by Tina Heine.
Ah, Ms. Heine.
Yes.
Thank you for doing so.
You're welcome.
Would you want to bring in any comments to the draft item that we're looking at?
It has been reviewed by a member of the school committee, just for editing purposes, and that's where it's left. So this is in response to the comments made by Representative Dykma and Senate President Spilka when they were with us back in June, two, three weeks ago. It was their, I interpreted it to be their strong recommendation that the town of Holliston reach out to our congressional delegation, asking for support in response to the COVID crisis. And so I kind of went back through those meeting minutes and listened to the recording again, and the comments I had written down, and compiled this letter to represent those comments. So I think in terms of adding to it, if there were comments that I missed, or people feel are important and should be included, there's, that should be addressed. But I, this really does represent the comments that were made during that meeting in terms of activity at the federal level, the needs of Holliston, and where we could see change, and where we could see action, and what we should be calling for in that regard. So that's what this represents.
Ben, any comments?
Well, thank you, Tina, for putting this together.
Oh, sure.
Really appreciate it. I, my only comment is, is that I would like the opportunity for the school committee and the finance committee to sign on to this. So I definitely want them to, you know, I want any further action for us to send that to them, for their, for them to sign on.
Yeah, I talked to the chair of the school committee and told her that depending on how the conversation went tonight, I'd be forwarding this on to her.
Sure.
To bring up for her meeting tomorrow night.
Awesome.
Tina, the only feedback I'd have is, I believe in the same discussion you referenced with the senator and the representative, they asked to be CC'd on the documents.
Sure.
So if you could kindly add them to the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Now I would echo Mr. Sparrow's comments that we should solicit any further edits from our colleagues at the school and finance committee.
Will do.
Before we take action and sign off on it. But thank you for doing that. So if you want to take that to their respective boards for action and consideration?
Yeah, Jeff, I'll do that, I'll forward this on to them.
Moving on, meeting minutes of June 25th, 2020, and June 30th, 2020 executive session. I have not seen the June 30th executive session meeting minutes. Were those the ones involving? What was that involved, that involved Travis, correct?
Hold on, I'm coming up here, I think you're here.
Oh, thanks, chief, appreciate it.
I think it was similar. Hold on, it was, the 25th was our organization, our reorganizing.
Do we have labor council on that call?
I don't see an executive session.
Oh, so the executive session is only the 30th?
June 30th.
Correct.
Okay.
The only comment I would have about the June 30th, I have no problem with the text, I just would like to see our names, if we're either going to do mister and miz, consistent with all of them, or we use our names. That's the only thing, that's my only comment about the, otherwise I'm fine with the text.
Looks good to me. Alright, I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 25th, 2020, and the June 30th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes.
So moved with, well, the second brings a comment, Ben, so...
Yeah, I was second with the comment that I just liked the change to the pronouns, the, our names, in the June 30th minutes.
Got that, Donna? Mr. Chief?
On the executive session, is that a motion to approve?
And release? Yes, it is.
That's what I thought I heard.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Reserve fund and year-end transfers. Does the clerk have the documents?
I do indeed.
Alright, I never thought it'd be this busy on a select board.
It's a different kind of busy. Alright, so we have three transfers, they appear to be year-end transfers from the police department. So I'll just go through, would you like to go through all three? Let's do, have a motion for each one individually, or do you want to do all three?
Do each individually.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind.
Alright, so the first one is for $5,000 from overtime in the police department to professional development. So it's from organization 01210-51300 to professional development, which is 01210-57100, and it is for training courses.
I'll take a motion to approve the transfer of $5,000 as noted.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That's approved, next one?
The second one is also from the police department. It's for $18,000 from overtime, organization 01210-51300 to supplies, 01210-55805.
Motion to approve the stated transfer, Ms. Hine?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the last one, Ben?
The last one, this is from, for the police department as well, for $7,000 from the overtime budget, 01210-51300 to building and grounds, 01210-52400 in the amount of $7,000.
Motion to approve the transfer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Ben. Moving on. The Vet Center Memorandum of Understanding. Is that in your front folder there?
I believe it is here, let me see. Where's the minutes? Letter, alright. Okay, um, yes. So I'll just read the, the top, the top line here, because there's like three pages here, so. "The Brockton Vet Center, BVC, in collaboration with the Town of Holliston, is establishing a Community Access Point, CAP, in Holliston, Massachusetts and surrounding areas. The intent is to locate this CAP in an empty office space within the Hollist, within the Holliston's municipal building located at 1750 Washington Street." And then there are some rules about variety.
Was that, Jeff, are you familiar with this request that's coming in?
I am, I am familiar with it. This is a long-term agreement between the town and the Brockton Vet Center. This is separate from the Metro West Veterans District. They provide separate services to veterans who are at risk, and they come in on a on-call basis. So, you know, this is a renewal of the agreement, there's no financial implications for the town, it's a gratis agreement with the town.
What is the term?
It is a two-year term, starting on August 1st, 2020.
Yes, yep.
And is there any cost to the Town of Holliston?
No, well, no, we only give them office, there's only one office space there that we give them, and it's on appointment basis only, and it's for veterans who are at risk. So the previous boards have thought that that's a good idea to support the veterans of the community and the region, provide the service.
And Mark Frank's aware of this, he had weighed in on this in support of this as well.
I'm not sure about that, but I would not dispute that at all.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Sparrow?
Uh, no, it seems pretty straightforward, I don't have any...
Anything else, Ms. Hine, issues? Alright, I'll take a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as stated by the clerk for the vet center.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries, thank you, Ben. Alright. Mr. Murphy, or did somebody on the Zoom call have a comment on that item?
I did, thank you. Vin Murphy, I just have a question, I'm looking at that lease or the agreement, there's no termination clause in there, and I would be a little concerned, what happens if they're not abiding by it? I mean...
Well, actually, it says the...
Trying to get somebody out of a property.
There is a termination clause, number two, the parties agree, both parties agree, this memorandum of understanding may be terminated by either party with 30 days.
Sorry, my bad. Okay, ignore me.
No, thanks, thank you, Ben. Must be the deck...
No, it's a good question, it's a, it's a good question.
Many eyes watching, it's not a bad thing.
He's got a lot of sun out there, on his Zoom backdrop.
Heat stroke setting in?
Yes, no, no, thanks, Ben, appreciate you weighing in. Last item, goals, objectives, liaison assignments. So this evening, I just wanted to set up the opportunity for each board member to utter their goals for the coming year, and also go through the liaison assignments, which are hefty, I think everybody's got a copy of them, so that we can discuss our wants and needs for those as well. So as is tradition, we'll start with the clerk for stated goals for the coming year, Mr. Sparrow?
So I have a few goals this year. I'm probably going to bite off more than I can chew, but I figure, go big or go home. So, so a couple things, I mean, so when I was sitting on the finance committee, I had certain, I noticed certain things, and so there's some of what I'm putting in in my goals and objectives could be construed from, from that experience particularly. So one of the things that I'd really like to work on is a capital process that's a little more robust and inclusive of other committees. I think the capital policy we have is a good start, but I think it needs updating. There's, there's another piece, another caveat to another goal that relates to that, which is I'd also like to work with Mr. Keast, I actually had a conversation with him, the facilities manager, on his budget, and making him have a budget, and including him in the capital process, because I think it's very important that he's a part of that.
Wasn't that a vision when we drafted that plan, that it would be year two, we would move to make him a separate department?
Yeah, I think we, and I, but I think it's because it is, there is a complexity, because there's so many little pieces in so many little places, just like we saw with the senior center improvements, that I'd like to work with him and the new town administrator to develop his, the facilities manager's budget. So those are two things, first two things. The third thing I'd like to work on is, I'd like to improve communication with the finance committee, I'd like to work on that. I know our new town administrator is going to have a lot on his plate on the first day, and I want to work on trying to develop that relationship with the finance committee, if, if that's reasonable to the, to this board, to develop that communication and sort of give something that we can then hand off to Travis that he has, and to, and can take and run with, rather than having to have him on day one have to figure out all the pieces, because he's going to have a lot, he's going to have a lot on his plate, and I want to take some of that off of it. And I think probably the, the last thing there, so that was capital process, communicating with finance committee, working on facilities budget and process, actually, two more things, sorry. I want to start working on laying the groundwork for a strategic plan for Holliston. I think there's, there's an importance, I think, in having the conversation, and this is, you know, this isn't something that, you know, next week we can have it, there's a lot of pieces and a lot of moving parts, and a lot, sort of wrangling different entities and groups in to, to create input, but even if it's creating just the process, so that way maybe, you know, this time next year, we can be visiting that kind of a, a plan. And the last thing would be probably working with Vin on retirement, seeing how that...
Oh, I thought you meant Vin retiring.
Vin, no, 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 Mr. Murphy, working with him on, on creating a plan for retirement, and putting something together for the retire, to making that happen. If it's October, great, if it's May, okay, but, you know, trying to get something together that we can, we can work from. So those are my goals.
Between middle sex and oped.
Yeah, like, what does middle sex look like? How do we get there? What do we, you know, what kind of inputs do we need, things like that, and trying to do some research and understanding of that kind of thing. So I'd say those are my goals and objectives. I know there's a lot on my, I'm saying a lot, but I, like I said, go big or go home. So, that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Tina?
I love it all, Ben, I think those are all great, great ideas. I think we might have a little bit of a turf battle there with your number three, but...
Okay, that's fine.
So my, I have three priority goals, separate from the liaison assignments. I definitely am looking for continued and additional opportunities for active transportation and recreation in our town. I, I think that it is a key piece to both quality of life and economic development in our town, so by that I'm talking about an improved safe network of sidewalks, crosswalks, trails, I'm talking about safe routes to school, complete streets, traffic calming measures, through the work of the Traffic Advisory Committee, and so on. Your comment about the capital process, Ben, really speaks to the need to have that in place in order to advance my, my goals. So the finance committee was clear last night, and it was very helpful to hear their thinking that things that land on the capital improvement plan are things that generate capital requests, that they are willing to consider for recommendation. When you go through our capital improvement plan, sidewalks are mentioned once. It's a multiple item, hundreds of items, I'm going to say, on that capital improvement plan, and when the sidewalks are referenced, it's in, specifically references a piece of machinery that clears the sidewalk. So we need to get this, this, these types of infrastructure and projects onto the capital improvement plan. That's a focus that I will have next year, a goal. A different type of goal is improved health insurance costs for both town, sorry, improved health insurance costs both for the town and town employees. Work, I'd like to work with the town treasurer, we've had conversations, preliminary conversations about this process. She has made a request in her budget to hire a consultant. It's necessary for the contract negotiations that will go on for health insurance plans, and this is something I'd like to be involved, and I think that there is a tremendous opportunity there to both lower the cost for the town and town employees, and offer them healthcare plans that are more than adequate to meet their needs. So there's a lot of hard work there. I trust our town treasurer, she's been through this before, and I will absolutely follow her lead. I look forward to working with her on it, and I do believe hiring a consultant will help us make good progress. So that's, that's a goal for sure for this upcoming year. And the third will be to work on sustainable, sustainability efforts and mitigation efforts. We have two things on the horizon, Nine Green Street and the MVP program. Those are big opportunities for this town to make a real impact, to address sustainability and climate change mitigation.
Marshall Street, too.
Yeah, Marshall Street would be another one, that's well underway, but yes, there's, there's more to be done there. And you gentlemen, I guess, still need to put on your makeup and get on screen for that.
True.
I'd like to work with our sustainability coordinator to bring more composting and recycling to our town, and along with sustainability and mitigation, we are still talking about safe routes to school, so active transportation falls under that, so again, improving opportunities for active transportation in our town. And then lastly, water conservation, this is something that falls under the sustainability efforts in my mind. So those are three important goals that I'm setting for next year. And then in terms of liaison assignments, I am happy where I am.
We'll do that afterwards, we'll do, just the goals first, liaisons in a minute, first things first. Real quick, as you both talked about capital processes, I'd like to reintroduce you to the Acts of 1994 that created the town administrator's role. I know you're familiar with it, but it is an item within the special acts that I believe the town, the incoming town administrator is going to have to embrace, and that is to be more integral to the capital planning process. He's going to have a serious part in that, and I would ask you both to keep that in mind as you go forth with your ideas of making our capital planning more effective. My items are pretty short, I've got three. The first is, and Mr. Hearn is on the line, so you've got my commitment, Travis, a successful transition of the town administrator. This probably goes without saying, but we're, we've been talking a lot about the kinds of initiatives and projects and things that go past the town administrator's desk. It's a very busy position, as Mr. Ritter can attest. I want to make sure the town administrator upon arrival and shortly thereafter receives tremendous support from the department heads and the people that work for him to be successful. I want to note to the citizens that we hope to have town meeting on July 20th, and if all goes well, three months later, do it again. We, we have a lot of work to do in a very short period of time to pull off that type of effort while coping with pandemic and the other exigencies. The town administrator will have a brief moment after July 20th to catch his breath, become acclimated with his job and the people that work for him, before he has to get immersed in the work of the fall town, special town meeting. This board knows we've deferred quite a lot of work in the interest, in the interest of austere planning from the warrant. With 22 articles, it's a relatively short piece of business, we're moving a lot of items down the road for consideration. That's where the new town administrator comes in. He's got a lot of work to do to not just become an expert, but to contribute to that success. So I think that's got to be my first job as chair, to make sure that he gets what he needs promptly from all the stakeholders to be successful. Number two, public works, infrastructure. This is an item that has been on my list since I got elected. We've made some inroads with some efforts to understand in more detail the, the poor condition of our infrastructure. This overlaps quite nicely, and it has for the last year and a half with Ms. Hine, on the safe routes to schools and the other horizontal infrastructure improvements. We've always seen eye to eye in this, we do need a plan. Holliston has to come to grips with the poor condition of its water pipe infrastructure and its lack of adequate sidewalks for citizens to recreate and travel this town. I consider the studies that we've deferred this past year, hopefully to reclaim in the October special town meeting, to be of high urgency, and I want to see to it that we put all our effort into making sure that we put forth articles that make common sense, and that convince people and stakeholders that this investment of a study is worth every penny, because if we don't plan for it now, we're going to pay dearly down the road. We've certainly made that case, more on that over the next several months. The last item is the governance committee. We formed a committee this past spring to come to grips with a couple of different things. There's a little overlap here, Ben, with your strategic plan for Holliston, I'll draw that out. The governance committee, as you know, is a group of five individuals who have been seated, sworn in, and are meeting. They plan to come forth in October with a first pass, if you will, of recommended changes to the way town government functions, specifically the select board, headed by former head of the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, Sam Tyler, former town administrator, Paul LeBeau, Tina Lingam, Scott McCagny, and Len Engel. It's a great group of people that have got tremendous experience in town to help us understand how we can be better, how we govern. I expect something in October to give us a first pass and an introduction as to what that means, perhaps some articles that complement that. But long-term, this, I believe, was a three-year committee, if I'm not mistaken, Tina, when we formed it, we're charging them with having a closer look at our infrastructure, our bylaws, and how we govern ourselves. Sam's got, and he's mentioned some great ideas of evolving town government to be more responsive to the citizens of Holliston, to make us smarter about how we plan and effectively govern. So that piece is going to be critical over the next 12 months to make sure that they stay on course and produce stuff for us that we can put forward to the citizens, both this coming fall and perhaps in the spring as well.
Quick question about the governance committee. Is there, is it a full committee at this point?
It is.
The five members?
Yep, they're off and running.
Gotcha.
Yep, they are, yep. So those would be my goals, and of course, in the middle of it, you know, man... know, manage a pandemic and whatever else 2020 throws at us, right, Mike? And we got it. We got this now, right?
Just delegate that.
Just. All right. So hearing that, our goals seem to be in place. Excellent goals, by the way, guys. I really think they're complimentary of our skills and hopefully what we can achieve this coming year. Always aim high. I like that. So. Onto liaisons. So what we did, this is sort of like herding cats. I've done this a couple of times, so I want to be as efficient as possible. It basically boils down to what do you want to do, and seniority rules. I mean, that's, that's about it.
Okay.
Sorry, Ben.
No, it's fine. I defer.
It wasn't so bad last year on the receiving end of that. It was okay.
I will be. I will say that I did hash out all the items that I've been a liaison to, and I think it's tradition that the chairman withdraw from many of the larger departments, more of a burden of my time for other reasons, as you know. So I'm willing to give on quite a lot of the roles that I've had over the last year. But before I do, let's start with Mr. Sparrow. If you'd want to give in on the accounts that you want to put a beat next to, we can start with that.
So I think the ones that I would say, you know, there might be some others here, obviously, but I think the ones that I would ask for specifically would be county retirement.
Where are you?
Pension and benefits, about halfway down.
Yep, okay, go.
And Finance Committee.
That is up here.
Yep. Public buildings.
Yep.
I would ask for golf course. I'm going to go on down. In the, there, obviously, there's going to be more, but these are the ones I'm just specifically asking for.
Yep, keep going.
And I would say that's probably the only ones that I'm going to specifically ask for.
No DPW?
Well, you had put on your, one of your goals is DPW. I would put DPW on there, but I didn't want to take it from you if you wanted to keep it.
I would think you'd be great at that.
Okay, then I would love.
I'm withdrawing as liaison for many of these roles.
I would, I would love to be the.
I'll put a be in to that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ben?
I think that's it for now. We'll start there. I'll start, I'll stake those first and see where.
All right, Tina, what, what grabs you?
Well, I'm going to start with what I will not give up. Come hell or high water, I will not give up Trails and Youth and Family Services. So, John, unless you were going to.
No, go. Keep going.
So I would add, I will add Planning Board. I'd like to take that one.
Yep.
I will add, like Ben, I will add Finance Committee. And, I mean, I've already, I wouldn't change what I'm on.
So you want to retain?
School Committee, yes, please.
Where are you? Hold on, hold on.
Sorry, I'm jumping around.
Where's schools? How come I can't find schools?
They're way at the bottom, last one.
Ah, yes, okay, yep. Do you do both, by the way? Do you do Key Fan Schools?
I, I did, but I will tell you, I did not have much involvement with the Key Tech piece other than to attend a Finance Committee meeting where they were presenting.
Okay. Solid Waste, you want to keep that?
Yes, please. Street lighting, I think, will, will go kind of with the Sustainability Coordinator, I imagine, in time. So, yes.
Keep that.
And that we could, I mean, we could throw in motor vehicle fuels. Why not? Board of Health, I'm happy to keep. I'm not sure where, how you feel, John, about the building inspector, but that's a liaison I would not mind at all. I would not mind any of these, but.
No, go for it.
Okay. Oh, well, Chief Cassidy's here. Will he keep me for emergency management?
Oh, that's right. Seniority gets a voice. Got a couple of years on you, Mr. Cronin, I believe.
Does he get to choose who his liaison is? Are we going to do that? So I would not.
Thought I was going to see some horse trading there that might ethically challenge us, but keep going. You get emergency management.
All righty. You and me, another year. Yeah, I would not change anything else, John.
So the remaining items that you've been intact with, the only overlap was the FinCom.
Correct.
Interesting, I'm looking back. We didn't. Economic Development, we'll stay with you, Tina.
Yep.
Conservation also. Okay. Ben, looks like Tina's going to move into the Finance Committee piece. Does that change anything else you might want to weigh in on? Consider the board open, by the way.
What's that?
Consider the board open. You're not stepping on my toes at all if you'd like to see.
Okay, then, all right, well, second pass, I would say, technology. Let's see. Oh, debt service. Sorry, that was at the top.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Let's load him up with everything else financial. Treasurer Collector?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. If you want me to, I'll do Treasurer and Accountant and Assessors.
John, if you want to pop me into sick leave, unemployment, and veterans. Unless, Ben, you had a strong desire?
No, on benefits? No.
Okay.
I'm good.
What about Medicare?
I think I'm already there.
Yeah, she's already on Medicare.
Yep, and health insurance, right. Okay.
Are you going to be sticking with the police?
You know what's there? I, I don't mind doing. If you feel like you've got too much, I will do it. If you have any interest in dabbling in it.
I don't mind, but I would certainly, it'd probably be the, that would probably be the last one.
Let's have, before we make those decisions, let's hash out what else is on here. So Mark had cable. I had CPC. Historical Commission is open. Housing Trust. Does that grab any of your attentions? No?
I don't know what it is.
Yeah, that, yeah.
So you want, you want the Housing Trust, Tina?
Yes, but we're going to do a count at the end of this.
At the end of this exercise.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Town Clerk.
We're at seventy-five, fifteen, and ten.
Town Clerk. Ben, interested in that?
Sure, I'll do Town Clerk.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals, kind of a regulatory role. I can't say it's a heavy lift, but.
Yeah, I was, I was their FinCom liaison.
I think you'd be great, Ben, so we'll.
Sounds like a plan.
So we got Agricultural Commission, COA, looking further down, Fire, ACO, Police, and the Dreaded Tree Warden. So I'll keep a couple of these, just so it's not so one-sided. So I'll pick up Cable, CPC, which I had. I'll pick up Historical Commission. I'll do the Agricultural Commission. I'll do the COA. You know what, Ben, if it's okay, I'll, I'll keep Fire and Police.
Sure.
It's easy enough.
That's fine.
It leaves the Animal Control Officer, Ms. Hine. I think you'd be great at that.
Okeydoke.
If you don't mind. And Motor Vehicle Fuels. Ben, you had it on FinCom. I don't really know. It really isn't a heavy lift. I mean, it's.
That's fine. You can put me on it.
Nothing. And then there was the Tree Warden.
I'll, I'll take that one.
We are done. Donna, I'll give you this list if you want to juxtapose it to what you have. Ah, yes, I'll do that. There was Marx.
Is it?
All right. Do you want me to go through the list? Does everyone have their accuracy accounted for here?
I will assume I'm accurate and wait for Donna to prove me otherwise when she sends out this list.
All right. You comfortable?
Yeah.
You good? There are more Ts on here. Okay, I'll give you that.
It's all about winning. I'm a middle child.
Let's take a motion, subject to change at any minute, of course, to approve the liaison assignments for FY '20, FY '21.
So moved.
So moved. Oops, second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It goes. Thank you very much, folks. All right, back to the agenda. Any other business this evening? Mr. Sparrow?
I do not have any other business.
Ms. Hine?
I have two, real briefly. The Nine Green Street folks, this being Scott Moles, Matt Zetic joined the call, Sustainability Coordinator, and James Keast, our Facility Manager, and I had a relatively brief conversation about the RFP, RFQ, going out for both demolition and design replans for reuse. And so James has drafted the RFQ. We are still targeting a potential article for October Town Meeting for the demolition costs. We anticipate that the article that would fund the design and development, or the development, rather, will come spring at the earliest, so a year from now, or a year, 10 months from now. So again, the RFQ has been written, and I think James, he's on the call, I believe, was going to present that for the board to sign on Monday. Was that the plan?
Actually, we were going to run it by Tom, I believe, Mr. Ahearn.
Travis.
Travis, sorry. Travis Ahearn was going to review it. I can remember that was our plan.
So coming up in the next couple of weeks?
Right. So we're going to, I'm going to make the final edits that we talked about today, the document.
Yep.
We can start with Travis. And the goal was to post the document on probably middle of August or so.
Okay. And then to close.
I would be happy if you wanted to send that to me. Now, my, my email is active. I'd be happy to get started. It's in the pub.
Okay, absolutely.
And I just, I want to thank James for putting the effort into writing the RFQ because he's included in it in terms of the design piece of, the thought was, you can't demolish this without a plan for what comes next because to demolish it, you'd go in one direction versus the other, depending on what the intended use is going to be. So I want to thank James for putting the effort into including in this RFQ an ask of the bidders for creative ideas for the design of the space, including things that enhance the Goodwill Park, things that bring in potentially solar arrays, solar canopies, addressing stormwater runoff. We know from the MVP program that flooding is a, is a risk for Holliston. So James has written it up so that the bidders are going to get that message and that they're going to be proposing design, doing design work that addresses some of these priorities.
That's great.
And I think that's great, exactly. Because this ties into the direction that I believe the residents of Holliston want to go in. So, and a lot of this falls back to the Nine Green Street Committee work that was done. So we're sort of picking that up and bringing it forward. So that's Nine Green Street, and thank you again, James, for your work on that RFQ. And then the second is the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program, so that's still ongoing. Today, I sent out an email to the Bar Foundation. Their, their consultants who are offering technical assistance. I hope to hear back. I feel that we should prepare projects in one of two ways. Either we go through the, the services offered for technical assistance through the grant program, or we fund it ourselves. So we hire an engineering firm to, to generate the projects. So going the free route seems to be the better, you know, tapping into what this grant offers. So I'm, I'm optimistic that we will hear back from the companies offering the technical assistance through this grant program within a few days, and I'll keep pinging them until we do.
That's great.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Just two quick items. Wanted to alert folks listening. I'm going to schedule a department head meeting with Travis Ahearn next Wednesday, July 15th. I'm going to talk to Chief Stone to see if we can pull it off for the police station. And it's just department heads. It's a meet and greet to have an icebreaker, informal dialogue for the 15th, a few days before he starts. I'll have Donna coordinate that invite once we confirm the room is available and we can, we can have our gathering. And just a quick item, confirming, Donna, the posting is up for the Admin Assistant Contract Help for the Board, for the Select Board. Is that correct? Do you happen to know that? The, the contract for posting the services associated with the Select Board Office, has that been posted?
The part-time help?
The part-time help? Yes, okay, thank you. So if folks are interested, they may apply. It is a short-term fix to give that office a little bit more help while Ms. Minihan recovers. So that is it for this evening. Anything else from our friends on Zoom? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
At 9:05 PM, that'll be a motion adjourned. Thank you very much, folks. Enjoy your evening.